Please call the roll.
Winners. Lahr.
Here.
Dowling.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bear.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Stelling.
Here.
Bowman.
I am for discussion and action on consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held October 17th, 2022. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting held March 19th, 2022. Item C, approval of the minutes of the special meeting held October 27th, 2022. Item D, approval of the calendar year 2023 schedule of regular meetings. Item E, approve resolution 2022-30, establishing a nonpartisan general election and filing period for said election for the purposes of electing officers of the city of Alba, Oklahoma. Item F, approval of claims in the amount of $594,745.52 in payroll expenses of $260,953.35.
A motion to approve consent agenda.
I second.
Have a motion by Mr. Stelling and a second by Mrs. Bear to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lahr.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Stelling.
No.
Item six reports, yeah, item six reports from staff. We don't have a planning commission meeting report. Mr. Bowman's not here for the hospital authority meeting. Mr. Dowling, you have a library board meeting report?
Yeah, absolutely. The library data and financial report were pretty good. There were some anomalies, I think, with the existence of moving to the new system. It looks like some of the overtime hours that they have scheduled, they've gone over that by the way item, but from my understanding, that should work itself out, is what I've kind of got. Have you seen that? I guess.
Yeah, the, we've got a few payroll categories where they're not going to, they were miscoded in the beginning. They're not going to work themselves out, but we're identifying them and on December 2nd, we'll be meeting with Crawford to go over those things and get them.
That sounds like the confusion of the issue we could, or the coatings. Absolutely. The other thing that they had, the Choppus Fantasy, which is a big fundraiser for the Friends of the Library, it was very successful. I think this was the first year they did without tasting and the event did not suffer. And I think a lot of the people who made some very intricate chocolate things were happy not to make too. They also got a new multi-factor, multi-function printer for the library, I think through some grant funds. They have reached out to Northwestern, the library there, to help kind of draw some college students in. Not all of them were fully aware of all the services that the public library had to offer. So they're doing a good partnership there. The next thing is we discussed our December meeting, changing that calendar to an afternoon or lunch meeting. They generally have a lunch for the board members at that time once a year. And then the only other interesting thing was we took some consideration on a vending machine, a book vending machine and some partnering. Somebody had volunteered that idea and they were looking to see if it would fit in the library and we'll have to see if they can make room. But other than that, it was a pretty steady library view.
Any questions? Thank you. Next item, we didn't, there's not a arena authority report, tourism tax commission meeting. Mrs. Bear, do you have a report?
This is a non-ARPA meeting.
Okay. There's no board of adjustments meeting report. The Alba Regional Airport Commission meeting, we did meet last Monday. There's an item on this agenda relevant to that and we'll save the discussion until then. The manager did report that last two months, we've averaged about a jet a day at the airport. So traffic's good, particularly jet traffic is good and everything else is just routine business.
Is jet traffic, that military planes doing the stop off from the agreement that we have or?
That's not military.
Oh, okay.
We haven't quite finished wrapping that up yet.
Oh, okay.
Recreation, should be Parks and Recreation Board meeting.
We met on November the 9th. We approved to put $500,000 in a CDB at Alba State Bank for six months with an APR of 3.9%. We also approved Task One of the Kenway Horn for the master plan for development at Hatfield Park for a total of about $49,500 and Friends of Play has pledged to pay no more than half of that. We approved to proceed with the National Registry nomination for Hatfield Park. Had a cost of $8,000 to be completed by January 2023 and we should have results of that by, hopefully it will be after March sometime. And Tier One has repaired the roof again at the rec center and, but we're still waiting on window repairs.
So the window repairs have been completed as of today, but we're going to have Adam from Code Enforcement go out and check it and make sure and then once that's satisfactory and hopefully it is, then we'll release final payment to the contractor.
What was wrong with the windows?
You could, they shifted somehow. I could take a paperclip and stick it through a plumb to the outside and so that was, that's not what we had in mind.
This is from the original repair on the roof when we had the insurance paid for it kind of continuing.
They did windows at that time.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Gail. Next item is the cemetery meeting. I don't think you have cemetery meeting.
We didn't have quorum. We only had two that were available and next meeting is next month.
Okay. Mrs. Bear, Finance Committee meeting.
Okay. At the end of October, Alba has collected 34.7 of budgeted revenue and has expended 29.7 of its expenses for the fiscal year 2223. Our general fund has collected 2.5 million. This is 36.6% of what was anticipated for the year and we have expended 1.9 or 32.3% for the FY 2223 budgeted expenses for the Alba Economic Development. At the end of October, the ADA Fund has collected 188,000. This is 33.8 of what was anticipated for our fiscal year and as of October, the city has expended 129,000 or 24.7 for the budgeted expenses for the fiscal year. The, sorry, Alba Utility Authority at the end of October has collected 1.5 million. This is 33.9% that was anticipated during our fiscal year budget year and the Alba Utility Authority have expended 1.3 or 28.9% for expenses. For sales tax, it is for the month of October, we have received 381,000 in sales tax and 42,000 in use tax for a total of 424,047.61. That is up 15.4 from October of 2021 and up 3.78% of September 22. Sales and use tax are up at 44, or are at 44.2% for this year's fiscal year. Is there any questions?
Thank you. I'll report on a couple of things. The Flynn Skyline project, they finished the fog sealing on that since our last meeting and looks like that window is planned. It looks like everything's sealed up and which is what we've wanted it to be coming into the winter season. I know Street's been working on some potholes. I'm not sure how many they've been able to accomplish, but I know they've got two of them in a couple of the high-traffic areas that I drive across. We did give word, not, we didn't get written notice sheet yet, but we got word that we will be receiving the REIT grant for water lines on Locust Street. We are in the next, I mean, this week probably, maybe this week, but definitely next week, going to be sending out surveys for residents living in the area from Church to Maple and College to 14th. And those are the residents that are affected by that, the entirety of the Locust Street water line. And for the CBDDG grant, the survey is to determine that, there has to be a determination made that half the people surveyed need the poverty level requirements or being at or below poverty level in order for CBDDG to fund that grant. We are seeking $600,000 with a match of in-kind labor to go towards that. But without the surveys being turned in, we just won't qualify. So if you know people in that area, we will, Department of Commerce picks who's going to be surveyed. We don't get to pick who the survey goes to. They have a random selection process and so they tell us how to, who to send the surveys to. And so if you know people in that area, encourage them to complete that. We're not going to do anything with their financial information and really the question is simply, how big is your household and is your household income more or less than the poverty level or the size of household? And with that information, if we have 51% at or below poverty level, we meet all of the other requirements for the CBDDG grant and then we would get consideration. I don't know if, it's not a guarantee that we would get the grant, but we would be fully eligible. We might try to get something to the paper, Mary On, to see about educating folks to make sure they know that it's not a scam. It is a real survey that we're trying to conduct in order to receive $600,000.
Can we see about maybe even the newsgram and even possibly our website or something? Try to hit everything we can to.
Educate.
Agitate that, what it is and what we're not really looking for, but what we are, you know?
Yep, we can do that.
On the streets, I noticed there was some expenditures for Cherry Street. Do you know what they did up there?
Cherry Street, they did an overlay and that had been torn up in 2019. They zipped it in 2019 and never went back and so it having been, I made the determination it been, between Miller and I, we made the determination it had been tore up long enough. Got it overlaid before we weren't able to get any asphalt anymore.
Are they going to do anything with Bill, do you know? On Bill Street, it's pretty rough up there, I know.
They will. I'm not sure, I don't know when or what they're going to be doing, but yes, that's on the list of streets that need to be taken care of. It's probably been more tore up because of water than any of the other streets in town. And so now that that water line has been replaced on Bill Street, we can repair that and not have to dig it back up again. I don't know the schedule. When I know the schedule, I'll let you guys know. We had pre-bid meeting for the water meter project last week and there were four, this was mandatory to participate in the bid and there were four contractors on, present for the pre-bid meeting. We did have with us Bill Myers from Myers Engineering as well as, can't remember his last name, Steven from the DEQ here to help explain the bid process to the bidders and then the requirements of the loan that we approved from the last meeting. So we were told that we will be getting the $800,000 as loan forgiveness and that we are likely to receive the $200,000 extra that they have in a different pot for these projects. And so that, that'll, everything that was presented by Mr. Brooks, Alan Brooks, at the last meeting when we approved going out for that loan, the payments will actually be less if we get that $200,000, which we're likely to get. That's good and the bids are due Monday. So we may, we'll look at the bids on Monday. If there's just a clear, you know, the bid that, the product that we like and the number that is the best, if it's a clear winner in that bid process, we probably won't have a special meeting, but if there's any, if it's close on whether or not we want to go with one product or another, one bid or another, we probably have to schedule a special meeting because we will have to approve those bids at our December meeting of the council. So I'll keep you posted there sometime after Monday to let you know in a way. And then the city Christmas party will be Wednesday, December 7th at 6:30 PM at the Moose Lodge. If you would like to attend with your spouse or whatever, let Heather know and we'll make sure that there's food for you. If any council members would like to make a contribution to the Christmas party, they can get with Heather as well. That, we will be, I don't know if I mentioned the date. I think during Taylor's report, I mentioned that we'd be cleaning up some things in the books with the payroll and some other things. Crawford and Associates are going to be onsite December 2nd. There's a few categories that, that between our turnover and staff and the office and between switching to Crawford as well as the payroll company, we're going to do some cleaning up and we'll probably have some things to bring back to you guys when we get that, you know, wrapped up. We hope to be able to do that on the 2nd though. Everything is, everything is accounted for, just might not be in the right box. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have. All right.
What time was that Christmas parties?
6:30. I think we're having ribs and fixins. We'll just leave it at that right. I don't think, I think they're going to figure all that out tomorrow, but the main course is ribs. But I didn't know. Next item, number seven, remarks and inquiries by citizens. Hello, Mr. Parsons.
Hello. I'd just like to take the time to invite all you guys, November 29th, to the spaghetti dinner at 818 Diner. It is for local Christmas causes and including Toys for Tots, the Christmas dinner and the Shop with the Cop that the police department puts on. I will let them know, but I just wanted to let you guys know that some of that money that we're going to raise there will go to the police department to help buy the toys when they do the Shop with the Cop and then also the Toys for Tots and the Christmas dinner. So if any of you guys are available, if you'd like to come eat or volunteer or both, we'd love to have you.
Thank you. And thank you for doing stuff like that. All right, item eight is discussion and action to approve resolution 2022-024, resolution of the City Council of the City of Alba, Oklahoma concerning coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds for non-entitlement units of government, ARPA funds, approving a claim for the standard allowance for ARPA funds, which will allow the city to use ARPA funds for certain personnel costs and the execution of all necessary agreements and related costs. This was on the agenda for last month and we had not yet received the final payment from ARPA on that. We did receive that on October 20th and that brings the grand total ARPA funds received for this particular use of ARPA funds to $869,168.35. What will happen with the approval of this resolution is that we will apply that funding towards previous expenses of the city of Alba and that the easiest way to apply those is through personnel expenses is allowable and then that, then that $869,000 just becomes part of our general fund. So like I said, it's, it's money we received that we applied for, actually they just told us we were going to get it and we did get it and we accepted it. And in order to be able to utilize it, we have to specify it for one of their approved purposes and one of those purposes is personnel, so.
This isn't the money that was supposed to be for just infrastructure originally or is it separate?
It was originally, no, no, this is not. I changed it so many times. When it got approved, it wasn't, it wasn't limited to only infrastructure, but they, they changed it in the final way they changed it. They stated that if you receive less than a certain amount, and I don't know what that amount was, but if you receive less than a certain amount, it could be, well, I think all along they'd said that you could approve it for personnel expenditures related to the pandemic and they declared that public safety wages and benefits were included in that.
Is that the federal government though or the state government?
Well, the federal government sent it out one way and then the state changed it.
My concern is that the federal government said it's supposed to be this way and the state is doing it their own way, that, does the federal government have any recourse to, you know, if they don't align to make you pay that money back or anything?
We've been advised that this is an acceptable use of these funds and it won't be asked back.
What do we hope to accomplish by offsetting that payroll?
It brings our general fund, fund balance up to closer to, you know, we've been in the negative with our general fund since, you know, 2020. This would all but about $20,000 right that ship. It allows us to, you know, by making the general fund right, that makes the, all the other funds right. Because all of our other funds are, they're showing their proper amounts and the general fund is showing a negative. And so as long as the general fund continues to show a negative, then we're not right. But once we get the general fund into the positive, then we're right across all of our funds.
Okay, so those other funds will receive the benefit of the general fund being made right? I guess as far as a budget allocation for this year goes, I assume, you know, I mean, we have the budget set. Will this mean that they will have additional things that they will be able to accomplish with an additional budget or will this help them meet their current needs?
Their current budget is already set and they should be fine to be, this money was not budgeted and so we will be doing a budget amendment probably in January when we look at all, if there are any other budget amendments need to be made, we'll be doing a budget amendment to account for this and anything else that needs to be.
To be added. I didn't know then if those departments, if we had a specific purpose to spend these funds in those departments yet.
Nope.
Okay. And this resolution is making this money available for the general fund to spend or it's technically spending the money in the general fund?
No, the money's already.
Well, that's, it's there, it opens it up, I guess.
We would have the ability to use, just like we do any of our other general fund budget dollars, we would have the ability to use that on general fund expenses.
No.
Because it was unbudgeted revenue and so if we felt like we needed to use that revenue, we could for general fund purposes.
I'd motion approve resolution 2022-024, the State Department.
I second.
Have a motion from Mr. Stelling and a second from Mrs. Bear to approve resolution 2022-024 as discussed. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Lahr.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Dowling.
Upstelling.
Brooks.
No.
Item nine is discussion and action to approve resolution 2022-031, authorizing application for financial assistance from the American Rescue Plan Act and the execution of all necessary agreements and related documents. This is a separate million dollars that's available for water projects and infrastructure projects. The plan for this particular request is that we will do repairs on our 16-inch water main between the well field and town. It will do approximately a half mile, depending on what the price of pipe ends up being in the contract labor. So it's not a great lot of project in terms of that particular project, but it will take care of two of the worst sections of that line that are in between town and actually they're going to be south of Houghton.
All right, and this looks like just to approve that application for financial assistance required.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2022-031, authorizing the application for financial assistance, ARPA and the execution of all necessary agreements and related documents.
So. Have a motion by Mrs. Bear and a second by Mr. Stelling to approve resolution 2022-031, authorizing application for financial assistance from ARPA as discussed. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lahr.
Yes.
Item 10 is discussion and action to approve resolution 2022-032, resolution authorizing O-MAG to distribute escrow account funds. When, I think when I made you aware via email, I think I said approximately, and that's what it says here in the description of the agenda item, approximately $38,000. That number is exactly $38,251.31 and that's what we will put in this resolution. When O-MAG does a distribution of these, it's because we have had favorable claims experience and workers' comp claims experience in the previous year. And so whenever that's the case, they return a portion of our premiums to us. And so this amount can either be returned to us in a lump sum or it can be applied to our escrow account. My recommendation would be that we do the lump sum return of it to the city so that it's cash that we have available if we need to use it.
This seems like this is really common.
We do this every year.
Yeah, we've always got some type of return. If we left it in the escrow account, it would just apply to next year's premium or?
Whereas we budgeted it, we already budgeted the entire premium and so this would be additional revenue that we could, we could budget this as additional revenue.
This seems a little bit larger than what past, past years.
I didn't, I didn't go back and look, but I think you're right.
I'd motion approve resolution 2022-032, resolution authorizing O-MAG to distribute our account funds.
Second.
Oh, I didn't mention them out. They might be binner.
Exactly. Would that amount be $38,251.31?
Oh, 31 cents, that would be, I broke it down on, good thing I didn't say it.
All right, the, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Lahr.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Item 11 is discussion and action to approve resolution 2022-033, approving inter-local cooperative agreement for Circuit Engineering District Eight, CDB Eight, January 1st, for January 1st through December 31st, 2023. This is also something that we. This is also something that we have done every year since I've been on City Council and probably well before that. But it's, CED 8 is a partner that we've used for signage and whatnot for our street departments and other departments when they need signage. And this, by the way, they're established, it requires a resolution that we're going to have an agreement with them.
It looks like the agreement allows us to perform financial tractions. Is there a limit outside of what the business manager's spending amount is? I mean, I don't think we'd ever spend $20,000 worth of signs, but maybe I don't know how much they cost.
For signs?
Yeah.
I guess if we needed $20,000, we didn't budget $20,000.
Well, that's why, we just go off basically the budgeted amount for those signs and they're just.
This just allows us to do business with them.
Fair enough. And it's speed, mile and crossing traffics, they don't do like, we have those custom ones that are like the Alva signs.
They don't do those, no.
That's all.
They're just, they're standard traffic signs is what they, I suppose they probably could do some custom stuff, but.
But it's like, I mean, any sign we have in town, I mean, even like the handicap parking on the backside of the special building, I mean, speed limit, anything like that. But actually, there, I think there's like six counties, they all basically participate in this deal and they do the same deal and it's, it makes them really pretty cheap to buy them.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-033, approving the inter-local cooperative agreement for Circuit Engineering District CED 8 from January 1st to December 31st, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Beer, a second by Mr. Stelling to approve the resolution approving the inter-local agreement, cooperative agreement for CED 8 for the year 2023. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Item 12 is discussion and action to recommend approval of Amendment Number 4 to the owner-engineer agreement with Park Hill for additional engineering services for the project rehabilitate runway 1836, lights and four box pappies with an additional cost not to exceed $80,700. Some of you may know, and I know I've probably reported on this in past council meetings, but for about the last year, there have been issues with the runway lighting at the airport. And the, over the last, I guess, four to six weeks, somewhere in there, the lights have gone completely out on the runway. So we are no longer able to take any night traffic. The engineer agreement that we have had for our FAA funding did not include this when it was originally entered into. But the, for the safety of all those that are, you know, looking to need to land at our airport, as well as just the overall, you know, appeal of the airport, we need to have these lights working. And so the board worked with the engineering group to get a plan in place to move forward with the lighting project along with the runway project that was already slated. The FAA will pay for 90% of this. And, but the thing is with, with the runway light addition to it, we had to get special authorization to proceed ahead of their grant cycle. So with the airport's existing cash balance, they're going to fund the upfront, or fund this project upfront. And then, once the FAA grant cycle comes into play next fall, then if those funds have been expended by that time, then the FAA will pay us at that time for that 90%. So if the, when it's all said and done, the airport has the money to do it and then they'll get reimbursed, all but 10%. The $80,700 is just for the engineering though. There still will be the bid portion of contract to actually do the light installation. But the, the grant will cover 90% of the engineering and construction costs.
Not having lights, those affecting our, like, medevacs out of the hospital at night as well?
It does.
This might be a different issue, but I remember when Angelica was here, she talked about some water issues with the lights and stuff in the hopes that insurance might be able to cover the damages?
It won't. It wasn't, it wasn't installed in conduit. And so that's, literally it was installed, installed with the new runway. Again, but I don't, I don't remember when it was originally installed.
Which you don't have to, I mean, because the new runway is over here or something.
I know that there were, you know, it was installed, it wasn't installed in conduit. And it wasn't, the way it was put on the circuits, it was not able to be separated out from other lighting systems with the airport. So when, there was no way to take the portion of the lighting, when we started having problems last year, there was no way to separate that portion of the lighting system a way to be able to work on just that part. And so it was, you know, at that time, they said, well, we'll work on a bigger plan to get all of it replaced and in the meantime, they all went out. But it's, it's a wiring issue more so than a lighting issue. But you need the wiring for the lights.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of Amendment Number 4 to the owner-engineer agreement with Park Hill for additional engineering services for the project rehabilitate runway 1836 lights and four box pappies with an additional cost not to exceed $80,700.
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Beer, a second from Mr. Stelling to approve Amendment Number 4 with the Park Hill for engineering service on the runway lights and pappy project, not to exceed $80,700. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Item 13, there is no new business. Item 14, remarks and inquiries by council members. I will let you know that we did get another resume for the business manager position, so I might be attempting to get with everybody to set up a special meeting. And that's all I have for that. Any other remarks, inquiries? Item 15 is to adjourn. And we will open the regular Alva Utility Authority Meeting. Please call the roll.
Winters? Lahr?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Bowman?
Item 3 is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 17th, 2022. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $240,273.1 and payroll expenses of $57,471.70.
I have moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Stelling and a second from Mrs. Beer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
I think no, being no further business, we will adjourn the utility authority meeting and open the regular Alva Economic Development Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Winters? Lahr?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Bowman?
Item 3 is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of a consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, October 17th, 2022. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $46,424.76 and payroll expenses of $12,416.88.
I have moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Stelling, a second from Mrs. Beer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Item 5 is discussion and action to approve the Alva Standard Letter Agreement, Task 1 with Kimley Horn for master plan development at Hatfield Park in an amount not to exceed $49,500. As Gail mentioned in her report, the Parks and Recreation Board did approve this item with the commitment from the Alva Friends of Play Foundation to fund half of the expenses on this. So the master plan is important in order to be able to go ahead and pursue federal funding, federal grants, as we did with the pool when we were at this stage in the game. But this is something that, once the master plan is developed, then we can start to seek those federal dollars and get that going. Like I said, the outlay for the Parks and Recreation budget would be half of this amount with the other half coming from the Alva Friends of Play.
I have moved to approve the Alva Standard Letter Agreement, Task 1 with Kimley Horn for master plan development at Hatfield Park in an amount of not to exceed $49,500.
My second.
I have a motion from Mr. Stelling, a second from Mrs. Beer to approve Alva Standard Letter Agreement, Task 1 with Kimley Horn for master plan development at Hatfield Park in an amount not to exceed $49,500. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
There is no further business, so we are adjourned. Everybody have a good Thanksgiving.